P M. Thank you for joining us. If we could go ahead and start with introductions, Nick.
Nick Dooms, Assistant City Engineer.
Elizabeth Edwardson, Associate Planner.
Kyle Kearns, Director of Community Development.
Jeff Maroots, Planning Commission.
Lee Tao, Commission Member.
Steve Shiffler, Planning Commission.
Katie Bailey, Planning Commission.
Ryan Austin, Commission Member.
Matt Zachar, Mayor, Commission Chair.
Dennis Cox, Six Ward Alderman.
Thank you. Item one, approval of the report from April 7, 2025, Planning Commission meeting. Commission, what are your wishes?
I motion to approve the minutes.
I got a motion by Maroots to approve the minutes. Second by Tao. Any questions or comments on the minutes? Seeing none, go ahead and put it to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it, six to zero. Item two, request from Wisconsin. Sorry about that.
Just Eric Daven, I'm online, and yes to that.
Alright, thanks Eric. Sorry about that. So ayes have it, seven to zero. Item two, request from Wisconsin Rapids Area Habitat for Humanity for a special exception to exceed the floor area of an attached garage maximum in the multifamily medium-density R3 district at 165 21st Avenue South, parcel ID 3403360A.
Thank you, Mayor. So the applicant seeks to construct a single-family dwelling with an attached garage that exceeds the 50% ground-floor living area by 99 feet, 99 square feet. The Planning Commission may allow a special exception to exceed the 50%, given it's deduced from the allowable floor area of detached accessory buildings. We have recommended approval for this type of request in the past. And this request is very similar to those that we have recommended approval to in that the garage would be keeping in scale with the single-family dwelling, and there are no anticipated negative effects. We are recommending approval with conditions. The first condition being that a total of 99 square feet shall be deducted from the allowable floor area of any future detached buildings, and that the Community Development Department shall have the authority to approve minor modifications to the plans. The applicant is also here, if there's any further questions.
Alright, thank you. Any questions or comments from the Commission? Seeing none, what are your wishes? I got a motion by Maroots to approve. I got a second by Daven. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed.
Aye.
Thank you. All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it, seven to zero. Thanks Eric. We have had a request to move item four to the next in line, so we are moving to item four, and then we'll come back to three. Item four, request from the City of Wisconsin Rapids to discontinue vacate a portion of Harris Street between 7th Avenue North to the east dead end. Mr. Kearns?
Thanks. I'm going to turn it over to Nick here from the Engineering Department to provide further details. Thank you.
So, yeah, just a quick background on the vacating of Harrison Street east of 7th Avenue. So during the design process of our Harrison Street project from 7th Avenue to 9th Avenue over the winter, we looked specifically at the 7th and Harrison Street intersection and started to look at restoration of the intersection and found that, you know, a curve would be more functional than the intersection that, the way it sits right now. We looked at the dead end that does not go anywhere, the cost to restore it, you know, to put back new pavement, rip up the old pavement, curb and gutter, and all those things that could be significant. We talked it over with the Street Department to see if there's any value from their standpoint with the right-of-way, and found that there was very little value for them on their end. We don't have any public utilities on that dead end there, east of 7th Avenue. So with that all being said, we went to Public Works last month, and Public Works approved continuing the process of vacating the right-of-way. So it went to council last month as well, and they also approved sending it back to Planning Commission. So with, if Planning Commission decides to further it, it would go back to council, from what I understand, in June, for a public hearing and a final vote on the matter. So with that being said, again, tonight, we're just asking Planning Commission for, just to consider a recommendation to discontinue Harrison Street between 7th Avenue and the dead end to the east. And with that, I'll take any comments or questions.
I shouldn't any questions or comments?
It is asphalt right now. It's broken up pretty badly. So if we did the project, we would, we could, there's probably a way in which we would probably leave most of it the way it sits. The idea being that we wouldn't want to stick any more money into it than we had to, since it's really not serving much of a purpose. But yeah, right now it is broken up asphalt. Correct. Yep. So what it would do is, it would get, the right-of-way would get split down the middle, and it would go to the respective property owner on each side for, so for however much frontage they have along the right-of-way, that's what they would get inside of the right-of-way. Yeah, we're looking at a couple different options on what we would do there. If we would just leave what's there right now. If we'd remove the pavement maybe, and just restore it as grass. But again, we'd want to, you know, save as much money as possible. But that's something I know Joe's working on with the property owners, and just seeing if that's something that, something that works for everybody, that doesn't cost a lot of money, and is kind of left in a decent condition for the property owners.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll just say I appreciate working with the property owners on this. I know one of them is using that as a secondary parking slash driveway area, so potentially just leaving it as is. I think that would be great to be a cost savings for the city, and it would still leave the access for the property owner. So with that being said, I'll approve, or I'll make a motion to approve the discontinuance of Harrison Street between 7th Ave and the east dead end.
I got a motion by Austin to approve. I got a second by Tao. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and cast our votes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Thanks Eric. Ayes have it, seven to zero. Going back to you, item three, public hearing in action on a request from the City of Wisconsin Rapids to amend Chapter 11 zoning ordinance, Article 6, Division 3, general standards pertaining to driveways.
Thank you.
Mr. Kearns?
So you can recall that last month, we had an ordinance amendment to make several changes to our driveway and parking ordinance within our zoning code. This is one of the several amendments we've done recently, again, to kind of clean up our ordinance, clarify a few things, and reduce some of the red tape, so to speak, for our property owners. Gravel has been kind of an area of contention since I've gotten to the city for the last five years. I know it's also been difficult to enforce over that same amount of time. I believe the zoning code changed from allowing gravel to a certain extent previous to 2018, and then with the 2018 rewrite, zoning code rewrite, gravel was essentially prohibited. However, if you, if you had gravel, a gravel driveway, or an area alongside of the garage, or a second driveway, that's existing gravel, the code would allow you to maintain it. But that definition, you know, hasn't been really well-defined either. And so we've said, you know, if over time, the gravel creates ruts from the freeze and thaw, or from, you know, vehicles accessing it, you could fill in those ruts. But the code does not allow you to expand, and a lot of people who have gravel driveways want to expand, or over time, as they bring in more gravel because there's no edging, the gravel just slowly starts to expand, and the next thing you know, they have a double gravel driveway leading to a single garage stall. Or, you know, the gravel in their backyard becomes a parking lot. So I think primarily gravel was prohibited from an aesthetic standpoint, just to beautify our neighborhoods, requiring asphalt and concrete. I think it jives well with the Engineering Department standards that require a hard-surface apron leading to any sort of driveway. So the apron being the portion within the right-of-way off the road before the private property starts has to be hard-surface concrete from the Engineering Department. And then I think it also serves a purpose, or minimizes washout, right? So gravel, you know, can wash on the sidewalks, can wash into the storm sewer. And so, for that reason, and those reasons, I think it was prohibited in 2018. I think there might be a way, though, to take a hybrid approach. So part of what I'm going to describe today is to help you understand how common gravel driveways exist, and in what different forms. And then at the end, what I'm suggesting is a hybrid approach that may allow the expansion of gravel in a certain instance, but not necessarily a full driveway, as you'll see shortly. So first, I just want to go over some examples here. You can see in the bottom left, the snapshot of the neighborhood in relevance to the city. So this is on the northwest side. You can see here about 50% of the driveways that exist in this neighborhood are gravel. Moving forward, this is again, similar neighborhood, again, about 50%, maybe a little bit more here are gravel. I think there might be one or two that was missed. But in some instances, it's a large gravel area, as you can see in the middle of the picture. Some, it's just a single gravel driveway leading to a single accessory structure. Another area of the city on the west side, not as prevalent here, but you can see them again highlighted in red there. As we get to the northeast side of the city, again, they also exist. You can easily distinguish, again, the concrete driveways here and the asphalt driveways from the gravel granite or dirt driveways in some instances. Here again, on the northeast side, some more examples. You can see in the bottom left here, where there's some parking in front of the home or alongside of the home. So all the gravel driveways here, not only are they conforming, I shouldn't say all of them, but some of them, majority are all conforming because of the gravel. But then some of them also are in front of the home, which is not permitted, or right, exceed the width requirements for driveways typically, and that's just how they've evolved over time. So the point I'm trying to make here is kind of to showcase the prevalence of gravel driveways in neighborhoods. Mostly they're, right, defined older neighborhoods that have existed for some time. And what you can see here is that a lot of these are single-stall driveways that lead to a single accessory structure. And I think, you know, as the family size grows, the number of drivers grow, and so they oftentimes look to expand that gravel to accommodate additional vehicles. Or they're, right, they're significantly limited. They can't put an accessory structure in, so their garage becomes that accessory space with the mowers and the snow blowers and the bicycles, and then they run out of driveway space pretty quickly. Another example on the southeast side, near the airport here. Less prevalent, again, in sub-areas as you get further east, or out from the central city, out from the river going both east and west. We eventually then get into, you know, newer neighborhoods. This is an example where, you know, this, I think these homes are from the 50s or 60s, and you have mostly concrete driveways here on the west side. So again, it does vary throughout the community. And then we've got some photographs. This is an example of concrete driveways you can see leading to a detached accessory structure. And our code allows for this, where you can have a taper in the driveway, eight feet into the property, that eventually leads to a parking area alongside the garage. And I bring this photograph up because that tapered area alongside of the garage where the boat is sitting could be a potential hybrid solution where that's far enough back from the roadway. The main driveway leading up to it is not gravel, it remains asphalt. But the area alongside the garage could potentially be gravel if it had, you know, a base layer, if it had containment, brick pavers, or wood edging or something to prevent it from expanding, and if it were somewhat regulated. And that's what we get to after these photos. But again, here's, you see the up-close and personal here where you have, you know, these are examples of really old homes leading to either garages or no parking that are single-stall here. You can see the old apron there that also doesn't necessarily meet code. But the homeowners are significantly limited here in their ability to expand their driveways, given the property line and the homes. Some other examples where you've got parking in front, which would not be prohibited, even if it were asphalt or concrete. You can't necessarily have a parking area outside of the plane of the accessory structure. If you don't have an accessory structure, we limit the width and the depth. If you have an accessory structure, you can't necessarily park on the left or the right unless it's leading to a legal parking area alongside the garage. So these instances, both are in front, parking areas in front of the home that are technically illegal to begin with. Some more here, crushed gravel, crushed granite, mix of concrete there and gravel. Another one in front of the home here, and then we've got gravel off of the side of a driveway there in the bottom right that would not be permitted. That's actually in the right-of-way. Majority of that is in the right-of-way, which would not be permitted either. Again, just trying to showcase the, you know, a lot of times, these homes don't even meet the 25-foot setback. But you can see from the bottom left that there's a parking demand on the property, and the only way to go is to the left or to the right. If you go to the right, you're in violation of the code. You can't park in front of the home. You can park in front of the garage, but not the home. And then if you park to the left of the garage, it cannot terminate. It has to continue alongside of the garage and lead to what's called an auxiliary parking bay. So again, these are non-conforming for reasons more so than just because they have gravel. They don't meet the definitions of a legal parking area. And then there are others that I think have just expanded over time to become more of a parking lot, as property owners continue to just bring in bags of gravel that you buy at a hardware store and kind of dump it, dump it on-site. The top-right picture is an example of something that I think could be a hybrid solution. You obviously have a legal driveway here on the top right that leads to a garage. It's not, it does not lead to a parking area in front of the house. But then on the right side, you see there's a taper that's allowed in gravel, or sorry, that exists in gravel, that leads back to a shed and/or a parking bay on the side of the garage. You'll see in the next slide that that is essentially, I think, a hybrid solution that I think doesn't necessarily decrease the aesthetics from the street view. It maintains a setback for the gravel. If there's containment, it contains the gravel, but it reduces potentially the cost burden on the homeowner from having to do asphalt or concrete. And then they obviously would be allowed gravel on that auxiliary bay leading from the concrete driveway. With that being said, that's essentially what I'm proposing as a potential amendment here. Rather than permitting, like we came with last month, gravel driveways from the roadway, I think what I'm suggesting is allowing for the auxiliary parking bay alongside of a hard-surface garage that leads to parking along the house or to a detached accessory building could be gravel. And then we provide some standards in addition to that, that there needs to be a setback from the rear side and front yard. There needs to be a containment barrier, underlayment, and then obviously a base layer and top layer for that gravel. And so essentially, what the last picture showed two slides ago was what's being shown up here. Where you see max width on the center driveway, that would all have to be required concrete or asphalt. But then in that auxiliary parking bay, 10 feet into the property, you'd be able to start a taper that leads to that auxiliary parking bay that would be allowed to be gravel. With that, I've exhausted what I've had to say in regards to some of the examples and what we are proposing as staff. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Commission, questions, comments?
Right. And so I think if you don't do that, I think what tends to happen is people get ruts, and then the ruts dig down into the soil layer, and then the soil starts mixing, and then you have weeds starting to grow up through that gravel. So I think what we'd want to see as staff is that the gravel is properly installed, right? You have your base layer. You have your, whether it's crushed granite or construction gravel on top of that, that's then tamped down, right, to prevent the weeds and the dirt from working its way up. I think there have been concerns about plowing, either with a snow blower or with a truck. I think if you have that base layer and you create that substrate, and it's tamped down, I think you mitigate significantly any, you know, gravel throw that would naturally happen when snow plowing. And I think the setback also because you're setback 10 feet, the fear of it working its way into the street or the sidewalk is minimized because of that setback. Any snow blower would probably be blowing it into their own yard if it's kicking it up.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, I feel that the changes, the proposed changes to this ordinance oversteps by severely limiting homeowners' autonomy and imposing burdensome construction requirements that are disproportionate to the actual risks posed by gravel driveways. I think at its core, this ordinance infringes on the principle that homeowners should retain reasonable discretion over the use and maintenance of their property. Gravel driveways are a traditional and functional option. Imposing strict setback requirements and mandating approval for specific materials like underlayment mats or edging, I think it undermines the property owner's ability to make personal, cost-effective choices that suit their property and their budget. The proposed standards, including the 6-8 inch base, 4-inch gravel top, underlayment grid, and edging, imposes a construction burden often on par with full concrete or asphalt installations. These materials and labor can significantly increase the cost for homeowners, especially those that manage larger properties. This could effectively restrict gravel driveways to only those who can afford to upgrade them to near paved standards, thereby reducing equitable access to the viable parking solution. Gravel driveways, when properly maintained, do not inherently reduce neighborhood aesthetics, as you saw, in my opinion. In fact, many property owners choose gravel to maintain a rustic, environmentally-integrated look that blends with landscaping better than stark pavement. And furthermore, gravel is a more permeable surface, allowing for better water drainage and less runoff compared to asphalt or concrete. So this ordinance fails to acknowledge these environmental benefits, focusing instead on the rigid appearance and standards. The enforcement of setback lines for gravel driveways, along with requiring zoning administration approval for materials and design, introduces bureaucratic delays and potential inconsistencies. Homeowners should be, should not be subjected to subjective approvals for basic driveway maintenance. I think, I think this just adds a lot of red tape and potentially limits timely installation or improvements. The fact that gravel driveways are already common in the community indicates the functional viability. Rather than eliminating or overly regulating them due to the misuse, the city could promote reasonable guidelines and/or voluntary best practices. So I urge this Commission to take a bit more of a thoughtful approach to this. I think, I think the restrictions that we're looking at here at this, the proposed restrictions are going to be too much for a lot of folks to overcome. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the Commission?
I had a question. Some of those photos we saw were gravel that was in the front of the yard or different areas. What has been the stance or the take on enforcement of those, or has that been done in the last few years?
Good question. So if we can confirm that the expansion of gravel illegally has happened within the last, let's say, one to two years, we will enforce it. I think it becomes difficult if we've got an aerial photo from 2015 and 2020 that show the gravel is in existence, right, to chase enforcement of this all the way back to, right, 2018 when the code would have changed, especially if ownership has changed. So, so yes, if it comes to our attention that an expansion has happened illegally, right, within a year or two, we will follow up and ask for correction. I will say it is difficult because there are so many gravel driveways within the community, right? Somebody who's maintaining their gravel, you know, they don't have to get a permit if they're filling in the ruts. We don't necessarily know if, you know, when and if they're expanding them, especially if it's not visible from the street. So it is something that can be more difficult to enforce. And I will say the code enforcement officer with the Police Department, as part of the enforcement of parking on the grass, I know is enforcing, enforcing the gravel driveway requirements as well. I believe he supports, or the Police Department supports, allowing gravel driveways to a certain extent, because I know they see those complaints, right? They're talking to those homeowners about additional drivers, you know. They understand, as do we, that a lot of these older properties are smaller, they don't have a lot of lot width, and they're kind of boxed in, so they have very limited options. And again, to Alder Austin's point, may not have a lot of money to be able to put in a concrete or asphalt driveway.
Thank you, and that makes sense. And I guess personally, I would be for having a gravel driveway just when it gets into the front of the yard, or like, that's where the complaints come into, where it's expanded too far as what it was. And I'm just getting into town, and I think I've passed five gravel driveways here, and those were all, I guess, up to a good standard to my take.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Alright, at this time, I will open it up to public hearing at 4:29 P M. Anyone wishing to speak in favor or against this issue, please step forward. Call for a second time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this issue, please step forward. And for a third time, anyone wishing to speak for or against this issue, please step forward. At this time, I will close the public hearing at 4:30 PM. And turn it back to the commission if there are any other comments or questions. Seeing none, what are your wishes?
So if you couldn't tell by my previous comments, I am in favor of allowing gravel. I think, I think gravel should be permitted without setback restrictions, as long as it does not encroach upon the public right of way. Gravel areas, I think, I feel should be maintained to prevent excessive migration into the streets and neighboring lots. Uh, homeowners should be maybe encouraged to use a, a simple containment edging or, 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 uh, uh, tight material and, and base layering, um, but not required. And, and I feel that, you know, the city may issue some, some guidelines for maintenance, but I don't think, uh, uh, I don't think we should require zoning administrator approval for, for material choice or installation. Yes, yes. Yes.
Kyle, how, how would we go about not eliminating, setting them off the side that, that would be a staff recommendation for, for the containment area from side to side? You know, uh, like the alderman said, I kind of agree with him, I got a, I got a dirt driveway in my backyard, but I don't have no edging to keep it within. Now, how could you put that as a property owner that comes here, could you put that as a staff recommendation instead of a, an ordinance saying that you had to?
Yeah, so, so, uh, a gravel driveway or an auxiliary parking bay as it's proposed would still require a driveway permit. So right now, if you have a new driveway or you're making a change to your driveway, you've got to get in it, uh, come in and get a driveway permit. The primary reason is because again, engineering requires concrete in the right of way. There are width requirements, um, depending on if it's a single stall, if it leads to an accessory structure, et cetera. And then we've got to make sure, uh, that it meets the three foot side yard setback. So driveways have to be three feet from the side yard and obviously they cannot be in the front of the home. So we asked for a site plan, uh, there's a, there's a fee for that. Um, and then obviously, uh, engineering would review any new driveways in the right of way. So, um, the, the reason for this hybrid approach is again, because last month when we brought forward the full ordinance amendment for the entirety of gravel, essentially, there was concerns, uh, both by other staff and I think the community members. And then I think there was, um, concurrence at plan commission, uh, to the same effect. And so, right, we tried to provide some clarity on the prevalence of gravel driveways and what forms they exist. And, and tried to, you know, come up with this hybrid approach as a starting point. And then perhaps a year or two goes by, people are taking advantage of it or they aren't. You know, would that be another opportunity then to maybe open up the restrictions further for gravel? From what I've gathered, I think the restrictions here or the conditions, uh, for auxiliary bays are, are maybe too burdensome. Um, if that's the case, I think you can, you can, you can amend the ordinance as you see fit. You can expand it or you can direct me to come back maybe with a different ordinance that's tailored more towards, uh, the commission's will.
So, Alderman, what do you think we should change? I understand that we don't want this, we want a little bit more leniency for the property owners to make decisions on what they're putting for driveway. So what would we consider changing?
Well, particularly the, the, I would say, the, the restrictions with the base and, and the thickness and the borders. I mean, again, I think it's, it's the property owner's will to, uh, install as, as they, they see fit. You know, and, and I think we, we've gotten away from that in a lot of situations, not just here. And, you know, it, it's something that, um, I feel property owners have the right to maintain, um, their, their driveways the way they see fit. Um, as long as, like I said, we're not seeing gravel migration, um, and, and, you know, that, you know, it's a tasteful, it's a tasteful, um, installation. I think that's all we should really be concerning ourselves with. We shouldn't be telling them what materials they have to use and how deep they have to go. Um, so number one would be the restrictions, uh, listed, um, which I can, I can read off if, if need be. But, you know, also, you know, like I said, you know, restricting, restricting gravel within the right of way. Um, but beyond that, I mean, I, I, I don't see why we should have to impose any setbacks or anything like that on, on property owners. Um, I, I feel that's, that's an overreach as well. So, um, I think you can kind of sense of where I'd like to see this. Again, there's, this is a commission decision, but this is where I'm at with it.
I do have a comment. Just as a homeowner myself, I, my property would fall under the hybrid structure right now where the majority is concrete, but I do have a section that is gravel. And I know that there are other alternatives to keep that gravel in place, like grid systems. Are there other alternatives that we could consider not enforcing the gravel, uh, not enforcing the concrete? I'm, I was also against concrete from, again, my own perspective, that it's just so harmful to the environment. The amount of carbon emissions that come up when you place the concrete that I was, I wanted to avoid it if I could. So, um, are there other options besides concrete?
So, right now, the code says if you expand a driveway or you construct a new driveway, you have to have hard surface, a bit of this material. So, uh, concrete, asphalt and brick pavers done properly. I say done properly because people that put brick pavers on grass, dig out their grass, they will never hold up and they will never last. They need a base layer for brick pavers, right, you need to put silica sand to seal them together, right, there's a, there's a proper way to do it. So those are typically the three types of driveways that are currently permitted under the zoning code. And we will not issue a driveway permit for a gravel driveway at this point. Now, there are people that put down gravel for fire pits, they put down gravel, um, you know, in their backyards to park a, uh, recreational vehicle. So you can have, you know, one recreational vehicle parked off, off hard surface, essentially off your driveway in your yard. Um, and so if the gravel in those instances, like a fire pit is not connected to the driveway. You can have that gravel, just like you could, you know, you could put AstroTurf down in your backyard if you wanted a tennis court or something.
I guess we would need a little bit of direction, Mr. Austin, as to how you would want to, if you want to make a, a motion?
Well, I think, you know, Mr. Kearns hit the nail on the head, they won't, we, we currently do not allow a gravel driveway, we won't permit one, which that in itself is an issue that I think we should, we should look into as well. Um, but, you know, as I've stated, um, for me to be on board with, with, with the amendments to this, this ordinance. Again, I think, you know, it, gravel should be permitted without setback restrictions, as long as it doesn't encroach upon the public right of way. Gravel areas must be maintained to prevent excessive migration. Homeowners are encouraged, but not required to use containments, uh, base layering or, um, or anything like that. And the city, again, may issue, you know, general guidelines for maintenance, but shall not require zoning administration approval. Um, that's where I'm at with it. Um, that's what I would like to see, but again, this is the commission's decision as well, so. I think, I think Mr. Kearns could, 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 you know, if the commission agrees, could, could rework this ordinance with kind of what I've stated and then we come back to it, uh, next month, maybe, um, that was what I would recommend.
Other commissioners?
Because it's on here, do, do we have to, uh, vote on it and then bring it back to you or how does that work?
Yeah, the
I thought we'd have to have a motion, a second vote on it, the vote fails, now we'll go back to you, right?
I would ask if you want it to be brought back to table it.
Okay.
Um, it's, it's, uh, the language is generic enough on the agenda where, um, if we, excuse me, if we rework the, the, the physical ordinance. Um, you know, you can table the request and come back with a reworked ordinance. But yeah, I would ask, ask for some direction that way also. If it goes to, right, any recommendation on an ordinance goes to common council and they can pull it out as well and talk about it also.
So I guess, uh, being seven of us, we, we can choose to table it if we are, the majority of us are interested in expanding this to include new driveway installation with stone or rock gravel. But if the majority of us want to vote on this one and just change it the way it is, we can do that, we would need a motion to do that. If there is no motion and we're looking to, uh, change some stuff up, then I guess I just need a, a nod or whatever to say, uh, that we want to table it and move it back so they can, uh, rework it to include, is that what? Again, we kind of have to give them direction, right, to include new driveway installation with rock, stone. With or without, I mean, can they, I guess, we have to decide, can they just come in and pour gravel on their, where their driveway is going to be and just rake it out? Or do we want them to have some standards as to, you know, doing it properly, keeping it contained, um, and all that stuff? So I, I feel like it's a pretty broad question at this point.
Yeah, so the, uh, originally last month, we required, we, we, we brought an ordinance amendment to include all driveways, essentially. Uh, I, I don't think plan commission felt comfortable with that, so then we, we provided some examples. Some of those examples, you had very well manicured gravel driveways that were well maintained, no ruts, compacted. You know, if, if they didn't have edging, they were at grade with the grass and so they were somewhat self-contained. And then you had other ones that had, had kind of blown up, so to speak, and expanded into the yard area, expanded into the front of the home, on the side of the garages. I think that's what we'd, we'd look to prevent, um, because I think aesthetically, it's, it's not the greatest look for some of these neighborhoods. So, so this was the hybrid approach that we recommended, but with that original approach, we also had majority of these four requirements. So we did, if you were doing a new gravel driveway, because you need that concrete apron anyways, from the engineering department. I felt as though based on some of the other internal, uh, questions and concerns we got, external concerns that having another 10 feet of hard surface was appropriate from a plowing standpoint and to ensure that some of that gravel isn't watching, washing down that grade, right? Because that apron is sloped, so if you have gravel right next to it, when those wheels come off that gravel, they're going to be carried into that apron and they're going to wash themselves into the curb and gutter. Um, I know engineering has that concern as well, but there are hundreds of driveways that we currently have that this exists. You have gravel leading up to that apron. But I think if there's something we can do to prevent that and we require an additional 10 feet or five feet of hard surface in those instances. And then you can start, um, the gravel, I think that creates more of a buffer to prevent that rock or gravel granite from working its way into the storm sewer.
Well, my problem with the, with the storm sewer is when I watch they come down and, uh, lay tar and then they put gravel on the road, but that gravel is not hard packed in and sitting in the, in the gutters.
A chip seal, you mean, on a roadway?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that, that gets washed somewhere. So when we start talking about gravel and, I mean, we're having the same problem. So how, I, I don't know how, I mean, I know how I look at it, but I don't know how everybody else is looking at it. When we talk about having that gravel come off that, off that approach. I don't have a problem with the 10 foot from the front. Now, the five foot, is that from the neighbor's yard?
Yep, so five foot side yard, five foot rear yard, correct. So that again, also tries to protect the neighbor from, you know, you're snow blowing or you're pushing snow with a plow. That there's a buffer between, you know, or a grass strip or something between that neighbor's lot. So that we're not, you know, hearing about neighbors getting gravel on their, maybe hard surface driveway or in their yard, that their mowers are picking up.
I can agree with that too. That's all I have.
So where do we stand, commission?
I will, if, if I can, I will comment that there aren't a lot of communities that allow gravel driveway. I think in the last 10 to 15 years, 20 years, um, they've been banned or prohibited throughout communities. I think primarily, again, for aesthetic reasons, but there are some additional reasons in, in addition to that, as we've discussed tonight. If you want, we, we as staff, we can try to do more research. You know, we did look at Marshfield Point and other communities, we can try to broaden that horizon and see if there's any other examples where gravel is permitted, we can contact those communities to see how it's enforced. If permits are required and then, you know, come back and almost have like a, a brainstorming or workshop session where we try to have some structure and walk through, you know, everything, what sort of conditions we could add, what, what, what we'd want to remove. That's a suggestion, if you tabled it. If you want to take action on it tonight, you know, to Alder Austin's point, I just ask for clarity on, does it include the auxiliary parking bay or all driveways? And then what of any of the four standards does it include, you know, one, all, none? So, feedback and direction would be great.
I'm open to your first suggestion of having that brainstorming session and, and talking a little more about this. I think, uh, it seems like, seems like that would be beneficial.
Go ahead and make this a motion to make it easier?
Yeah, uh, a motion to table.
Motion to table?
Yeah.
I got a motion, motion by Austin. So I got a motion by Austin to, um, direct staff to, uh, broaden the scope of what we're talking about and bring it back next planning, uh, commission to have further discussion. I got a second by Maroots. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your vote or, uh, go ahead and move it to a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Eric, did you vote? Eyes have it. Thank you. Eyes have it, seven to zero. Uh, item five, adjournment, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A second by Austin, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, all those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, seven, zero. Thank you, everybody. Meeting closes at 4:49 PM.